Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. This is the biggest assembly, I guess, that we have for one of these joint meetings. So, thank you very much for being here. I'm Joe Peck, Mayor of Longmont. And we're going to start with introductions, so I will hand it off to your superintendent, and we'll go around that way, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you. I'm Don Haddad, Superintendent for St. Ray.
Harold Dominguez, City Manager.
Shakita Yavro, City Council.
Johnny Choros, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Aaron Rodriguez, City Council.
Diane Lauer, Chief Academic Officer.
Diane Criss, City Council.
Dina Perpetidini, Area Assistant Superintendent of St. Ray.
Jim Bertle, Vice President and School Board.
Brian Switzer, Executive Director, Construction and Maintenance for St. Ray.
Suzie Hidalgo-Ferrin, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Longmont.
Laura Hess, Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed.
Tim O'Neil, General Counsel for St. Ray.
Matt Riddick, District Architect for St. Ray.
Greg Feath, Chief Financial Officer for St. Ray.
Sandy Seeger, City Manager's Office, City of Longmont.
Jocelyn Gilligan, Board Member and Treasurer.
Joni Marsh, Assistant City Manager.
Kail Charles, Assistant Superintendent, Assistant at Curriculum Management.
Brian Leimer, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Zach Aris, Public City Chief for City of Longmont.
Jackie Caputian, Deputy Superintendent for St. Ray.
Karen Mathen, President, Board of Education.
In the back area, we have three.
Jeff Frieser, Director of Recreation and Culture.
John Solomon, Director of the Longmont Public Library.
Justina Pacheco, Human Services Director, City of Longmont.
Great.
Somar Hirsch, Division Manager, Children, Families.
Ah, I did see them sitting back there. Um, so, thank you. We've got a pretty good crowd of very interesting people. So, we all have an agenda. I think the way we're going to go through that is each topic, it looks like the first bullet points, all those bullet points are going to be handed off to our superintendent. But after each subject, you'll have a Q and A. And I think each person has about three minutes for their questions. And if Karen doesn't mind, she can be our head. So, with that, I hand it off to our superintendent, Don Haddad.
Well, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that, and thank you for all being here. I'll give you a brief update about our potential bond, and I say "potential" because ultimately it'll be a decision made in August by the Board of Education, our recommendation, based on feedback from our community, and we've held several meetings. We also convened a task force that looked at the specifics of the bond, what we would be building, where it would be built in terms of each project, and then the cost. And so, we had strong support to move forward. What we're looking at in a bond is three major areas. One is to accommodate growth. We're at thirty-three, approximately, thousand students right now, and sixty schools. And our ultimate build-out plan is for sixty-five to seventy thousand students. And so, each year, we're going to see growth, and it's important that we plan, and we move forward with that planning, so that we're not on the back end trying to play catch-up. And so, what this bond will do, number one, is provide additional schools to accommodate the growth. There will be an elementary school in Longmont, there will be an elementary school in Erie, there will be a K-8 in Mead, there will be a high school out on the east side of our district that will serve, with open enrollment, it could potentially serve all areas, but primarily, it will serve our Mead, Frederick, Firestone, Deacono area out in Erie as well. And then, the fifth will be a Career and Tech Ed Center, similar to the one that we have here in Longmont. We have a long waiting list now in Longmont for students to get their two-year certificates and to participate, enroll in welding, and electronics, and machining, and automotive technology, culinary arts, and all of those programs, nursing, et cetera. And so, another facility, because our numbers are exploding, will create lots more space here in Longmont for a lot of our students, and it will create space in the eastern side of our district. And it will stop all of the busing from one side of the district to the other, it will stop interfering with students' schedules as much, and again, it will accommodate literally thousands of additional students with a very lucrative opportunity to earn their two-year certificates and then go into the workforce, making sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year. And so, that's something that we're very excited about. The bond will also accommodate the renovation of our buildings, and you know about deferred maintenance. If we defer maintenance any longer, the costs will escalate. And so, we need to make sure that our roofs are repaired, our walls, our floors, doors, carpets, all of that stuff. And now is the time to do that, because the cost will fit within what we can make at cost and still not raise people's taxes, and I'll explain that to you in just a second. And then, the third area is safety. We need to make sure that our fire alarm systems are up to date, and all of the camera systems, and the double vestibule doors, and all of the things that keep our students, teachers, and visitors safe in our buildings. And you can imagine, when you start looking at sixty schools, and you start looking at buildings such as this one, there's just a lot that you need to keep up with. And so, right now, we can go for a bond that accommodates the things that I've just mentioned, and we can do so without raising taxes. And we know that we can do that this time around, we don't know if we can do it out in the future, because of the escalating costs of inflation, and deferred maintenance, and all of those things, and the cost of construction. Because, I don't know, Brian can probably explain, I remember when a high school would cost something like fifty million dollars, now a high school is well over a hundred million dollars. And that's just the nature of rising costs. So, because our assessed valuation has increased significantly within our four-hundred-eleven square miles, we don't have to raise taxes on an annual basis in order to accommodate the dollar amount that we've selected. And we have deliberately selected a dollar amount that will not trigger that increase. And that's why it's important that we go in 2024 this fall, because if we push it out another year, the costs will simply escalate, and safety issues will continue to rise, and those types of things. The other thing is, we have paid down a good part of our debt earlier than we were required to, and so, we've saved, basically, taxpayers over eighty million dollars in terms of costs that we would have otherwise incurred. So, between paying down debt early, increased assessed valuation, we're able to go for this bond, which will take the entire St. Ray Valley school system out into the next decade and not increase people's taxes. Now, people have said, "Well, my taxes went up," and that may very well have been true, because the assessed valuation on your home went up, but that's not something we control. This bond will not increase taxes. The tax increase that you've already experienced has nothing to do with this bond or the school system. The other thing that I think is important for people to know is, we have lowered the taxes by 1.147. You know, and Greg, you might, if anybody has questions, we can both respond to it. But that took effect this spring. So, we not only are going to be able to go for a bond without raising taxes, we actually made the decision to lower the taxes, and that has already been done. And so, that's a very unique place for a school system to be in, and we're very grateful to our community and others for having put us in this position. So, that's the long and short of the bond, and we have done a couple of pollings. One was with an outside consulting group, and it polled very favorably. And then, most recently, we sent a mailing out to all of our taxpayers, whether they have students in our schools or not, and invited them to respond. And I know that, from having talked to the committee that's working on this, that the responses are coming in very, very positive. I also have been out doing a number of presentations, answering questions, and in each instance, the responses have been very favorable. People ask good questions, and the responses are there. And when somebody says, "Well, what happens if what you're telling us changes?" And I said, "Well, it can't, because the ballot language is going to be legal language that's on the ballot, and we don't have the ability to deviate from what that ballot language is going to be." So, what we're telling you is a fact, and it will be borne out in the ballot language. And Greg is going to kind of manage and be our liaison to the four counties, Boulder, Weld, Broomfield, and Larimer, as we put this on the ballot, if our board makes that decision, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for Superintendent Haddad for the bond?
I have one. So, the dollar amount that you're projecting to go forward with is fully within the realm of any adjustments that might have to be made after the passage of SBT 233?
Yeah, you know, it's, I'll have Greg respond a little bit to it, but, you know, we don't, we don't have control over what happens with outside ballot initiatives and things along those lines, but what we do know is that this will not increase the taxes. And Greg, I don't know if you want to respond at all?
Yeah, I think we can definitely still issue that amount of bonds. It's just a matter of how we stagger them and how we load them into the next, how long we decide to do, whether that's fifteen years, twenty-five years, whatever. So, we can definitely fit within the ballot language with how we structure our bonds.
Yeah, the other thing I would tell you is, and I think you already know this, but this mechanism is the only way that a school district can go, to build new schools and infrastructure. And so, it's not like we can say, "Well, we're not going to go for a bond, and we're going to put all the students on the roof," or "We're going to tell students you can't go to school." So, we don't have the luxury of not building these buildings, and yet, we now have this moment in time where we can do it and not put that additional burden on taxpayers, and, as I said, we're actually lowering their taxes. The other thing I will tell you, because your question prompted a thought, when school districts go for bonds, they almost always go for a mill levy override simultaneously, because you build with the bonds and then you staff with the mill levy override. And because our district's growing, and because our general fund and our other budgets are so strong, we don't need to go for a mill levy override. So, that's another way of saying to the community, we're doing everything we can to not put an additional burden. And as you look at what students and their families benefit from, we have five, and I'll get into this a little later, five PTEC programs where we have hundreds of students, students from lower socioeconomic families, first-generation students that are getting a two-year associate degree at no cost to the student. We have been providing free preschool and full-day kindergarten for our students for fifteen years, long before anybody else in Colorado decided that it was a good idea. And you look at all of the ways in which families are saving thousands of dollars in tuition because of the deferred enrollment courses, they can earn their freshman year in college before they walk out the door, to the tune of twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And then, when you look at these two-year certificates, where kids can get these certificates, and our workforce is in desperate need of these types of workers, and they can earn these and move on into the workforce, making tens of thousands of dollars without these huge amounts of debt. So, this is probably one of the best investments and the best returns on an investment that a community can receive regardless of the candidate.
Any other questions? Seeing none, our next agenda item, there's partnerships, which is going to be, you're not Superintendent Haddad?
No, I appreciate it, and I know we've been working closely with Harold on a couple of these things, but the trade skills and the apprenticeship opportunities, we have currently the Career and Tech Ed Center with all of those programs that I mentioned, and the numbers there are exploding. And we actually have the state champion welder, the automotive technology state champions, and the culinary art state champions. And we are now seeing in that school, a graduation rate of nearly ninety percent. And so, you're seeing all these students move through and get their diploma and their certificates, and again, being launched into these very lucrative careers. The other thing is, is we are partnering with CareerWise on a Northern Colorado apprenticeship hub, and we had an opportunity to go to Switzerland with the Governor's Office and study their apprenticeship program, because it's the best in the world. And we are doing that now, we have apprenticeship programs right now, and I know Dina can talk a little bit about this, but in our teaching and in a number of our technology areas. And so, we are already engaged deeply with apprenticeships. We're also working with the business community and with the Governor's Office, who has made changes, working with human resources, so that the businesses and the corporations can begin to accommodate our high school students doing these types of apprenticeships, and then going right into the workforce in that same place where they are doing the work. So, internships, apprenticeships, trade schools, we are, I have no problem saying this, we are absolutely leading the state and beyond in this arena, and we're seeing, and that's one of the reasons why we're building out another Career and Tech Ed Center and a Northern Colorado apprenticeship hub, because of all of these things. We were able to win a seven-million-dollar grant, the Opportunity Now Grant, and that's kicked in and does some work with our PTH apprenticeships, so a lot of momentum in this area.
Great. I was wondering, Harold, do you want to get a little bit on our apprenticeship intern program, as well as the swimming conversations that you're having with the superintendent?
Yeah, well, so, Don and I, on the swim inside, are talking, I know different groups are looking for additional playing space, and so, we're trying to work with them to see how, between what we have in capacity and what the school district can do in terms of funding, that there's some opportunities for some of these groups, and obviously, talking at a larger level about what does swimming look like in the future. In terms of the internship program that we have, we have a few different internship programs that we're doing. One is specifically, that we did last year with Front Range, and I know Sandy's here, Sandy's the one that's doing most of the internship work, so I'm going to let Sandy talk a little bit about that. Do you want to talk about that?
Sorry, I tried to catch attendance also.
Oh, okay.
Wandering around, ah, sorry. So, are you talking about the one with Front Range?
Yeah, so, we've done one with Front Range, I know we brought students in from the school district, and a number of occasions, they helped us throw out iPhones one year, we've had school district students come in and work on our security system.
Of course, our latest collaboration is a drum show on the Fourth of July. Yes. So, that's really wonderful. So, we do have two internship programs, one is considered a city council internship program, where they get to have the opportunity to work with city council and with departments on a project over the summer. That's a nexus between students at Front Range Community College that are also members of the Chamber Student Network, so it's a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as with Front Range Community College. And then, those students get to come in and spend the summer working in a specific department on something that they're interested in, so we kind of tethered those internships to them. The second internship is, as you all are very familiar with, is the PTEC program. So, this is our second year of PTEC students coming in, and so, we are partnering with Longmont High School, talking about business, different kinds of businesses and careers. So, we welcomed our first thirty students last year, so our second thirty students, they're tours next week, and so, it's very exciting to get to know them, and they're the mentors from the city, and then, of course, as you know, they worked their way through in their high school career with an internship with us, and then a two-year degree with the PTEC program. So, we're real excited, we're just at the beginning of that, but there's a lot of interest and energy around mentoring those students.
We're starting to have some conversations with our operational divisions, and so, when I talk about that, for those of you that aren't familiar with that, Longmont has our own electric utility, obviously, we do broadband, water, wastewater, and trying to really look at how we can take this concept of the internship program and move it into our operational divisions. Specifically, when we look in terms of hiring pools for our Longmont power, seeing people move into the lines person world and working in that field is something that we've struggled with recently, in trying to create a pipeline for those individuals that can move in through the system. And, you know, the salaries are pretty high in the electric industry right now, probably, once you get through the apprenticeship program, over a hundred thousand dollars. We're seeing similar things in our water and wastewater operations in terms of, and our operational departments in the field, in terms of what they need to do, and, you know, working within technology. So, we're trying to grasp what we can do on the operational side of the house to look at additional internship opportunities, and really starting at, you know, preferably starting at the middle school level, and talking to folks about the opportunities that exist in these fields. So, but it's a little bit different, because we're trying to wrap our brains around the safety aspects, because a lot of this, there's a lot of safety issues that we have to take into consideration. So, we're continuing to evaluate that piece as well. And I know we've had folks from Innovation Center work with our water department in underwater ROBs, and working those of some of our small reservoirs that we have in the community. And I guess, earlier this week, we were talking about how we manage, how we look at spring runoff, potential for flood, and getting into more in-depth in terms of drone concept, and utilizing LIDAR and some other components, and talked about how could we potentially involve the school district in that process. So, a lot of things that we're noodling around right now.
Dina, do you want to share anything about apprenticeships and work?
Yeah, we have apprenticeships going in our PTH program, so we are the business provider for that, since we are an organization of teachers, or an organization much more than that, but we have lots of teachers to mentor people. We also have apprenticeships, which is a two-to-three-year commitment of an organization to mentor and employ students. We have that also in our District Technology Services Department. We're looking at expanding that into our PTECs, so we have the five PTECs, including PTH, and looking at, all of our PTEC students receive an internship in that experience, but sometimes, students could have an opportunity for a two-to-three-year apprenticeship experience, which is a more developed, on-ramp into a company, and so, we're looking at that. And then, Don mentioned the St. Ray Apprenticeship Hub as well. We now have two full-time staff who will be with us, they started at the end of this year, and they'll continue next year, and their sole work will be to make sure that our students are prepared for internships, and we match them to business communities. We make sure that we do an assessment of the safety of that employment opportunity. We set goals between the employer and our students, and we make sure that that's a great experience for both the employer and our students. And we're hoping to get fifty to sixty internships per internship coordinator, and so, we're thinking, you know, a hundred to a hundred and twenty new internship and apprenticeship opportunities as we start this apprenticeship hub. And that gives us a place to point students to and parents to if their student wants an internship. We can have them call the apprenticeship hub, get connected with one of our internship coordinators, and then we can work with one of our eight comprehensive high schools or the Innovation Center, we can connect them to the right career path in really any of our high schools or our career centers. So, it's exciting.
Suzie Hidalgo-Ferrin? Yes, so, thank you, and this might be directed more towards you, Dina. So, which companies, businesses, and professions have you already connected students with? Well, there are probably a hundred and thirty just at C E T C. Okay, so, different businesses that they've been in touch with. And then, what particular trades? I mean, so, really what I'm getting at is, you know, I've heard from different plumbing companies and airline, you know, looking at airline mechanics. So, one of the things that, in conversations with folks at the airport, was that we have an aging population of people leaving that profession, just because they've been, you know, they're at age to retire, and they're really not getting new people coming in, so there's a growing interest. So, you know, so, kind of expanding some of those, and plumbing is another profession, as an plumber, sort of experienced that decline, or who's coming in, it's, you know, you see a lot of old cars, so it's like, we need the new people coming in.
So, Suzie, as we're building, as we're building out apprenticeships, one thing we are bumping up against is just the age requirements that many companies have in working with high school students. So, we have some work to do, and our businesses have some work to do in that space. Many of their HR policies do not allow for students under the age of eighteen, many do. They're a little more difficult to find, but one thing that we can use lots of help with is helping businesses and companies understand the maturity level of our students, because some of our students really do amazing things, and have great skill sets, and they're ready to go. I think sometimes, there's a perception that because they're under the age of eighteen, and Dina has worked with a group of folks all year to, really, the last couple of years, to really make sure that these handoffs to these companies between our students is done really well, that our students know what to expect, that the company knows what to expect, and that we don't just give them our kids and say, "Good luck." We do a lot of monitoring, making sure they're showing up on time, that our students have meaningful work to do, that they're not just sweeping floors, which is also meaningful, but that they are working in the area that they're specified to work in. You know, that they're not filing paperwork all day, that they really have good, meaningful work. And so, we do, we have work to do, we hear a lot of companies saying they need talent, they need, we have an aging population, they need the workers, and yet, their own policies create barriers for bringing in internships and apprenticeships.
Yeah, Suzie, one of the things I'll tell you, we have a very, we have a solid aviation program right now, a number of our students are earning their pilot's license, and we're also going to be building out the Innovation Center. It's fifty thousand square feet, part of the bond will be to double that because of the numbers of students who will be entering into that particular arena, and others. We also will have construction management at the new Career and Tech Ed Center, which encompasses electricians, plumbers, machinists, all of those types of things. They've got a lot of activity there. I sit on the Bell Commission, which is a commission appointed by the governor, and it looks at the business connections around this issue, and we are looking at pushing forward legislation to enable city councils and local leaders and businesses and corporations to join in the effort for apprenticeships, because right now, our biggest impediment is the infrastructure at the city and county levels. We have the kids ready to go, and they are going, and in ways that we've actually provided them, but as Jackie said, what we're bumping up against is some of the bureaucracies at the local level. And so, that's why we're working at the state level, through the Governor's Office and through this commission, to try to get legislation so that we don't find these barriers.
And I know we have an upcoming, was it with our state legislators? Yes. Yeah, that's coming up, so that's something that we can add to the agenda to discuss, as well as, you know, and this is perfect, because this is a great opportunity for us to partner, you know, we are meeting with our state legislators and look at policy, and even, you know, helping to come up with language that dismantle some of those barriers.
Well, there are possibly a number of apprenticeships and internships that could happen right in city government.
Yes.
You know, whether it's HR, or construction, or any of those types of things, because we have a number of students that would love to do internships and apprenticeships in the city of Longmont. And not just Longmont, but Frederick, Firestone, and all of these other places. So, those would be wonderful opportunities. I also sit on the Board of Directors for the Colorado Business Roundtable, and we are advocating for large corporations and businesses to begin to open those gates for the apprenticeships and the internships to take place in some of the largest companies and corporations in Colorado. And then, we work with the Chambers of Commerce, you know, we have fine Chambers of Commerce in our particular school district, and so, asking them to become active in working with their businesses to open the door for apprenticeships and internships for our students. And that whole workforce pipeline is dependent on it, so we're excited about that.
And Don, you know, I have an example. Today, I received an email from somebody in Central Administration that said, "Three of our four partners for one of our PTECs has pulled out of summer internships this summer, that they can't accommodate our students for summer internships." And this is a very up-and-coming area, it's cybersecurity. Every business is saying they need professional hackers, they need cybersecurity experts, and yet, three of the four of our partners pulled out of offering summer internships for us.
Do you explain why?
So, St. Ray is going to offer those internships as much as possible for our own tech department, but we have to be careful that we have the capacity to manage that number of students.
Do they explain why they pulled out?
Yeah, some of it is resource, you know, I think what's frustrating to hear sometimes is that, you know, we, businesses offer relocation packages to import talent, and yet, they don't have the resources. the resources to actually pay for, pay internships or apprenticeships. So, it's, it's kind of that proactive approach on the front end, um, in prioritizing that. Um, so we've heard, we've heard some of that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, knowing those reasons, we can kind of look for solutions. Especially since a lot of them ask, you know, for contracts with the city and there's, they want partnership with the city. Well, you know, we're looking at housing and meeting the needs of our current population. And then, you know, rather than businesses looking to prioritize and bringing in outside people, really how can we grow our own industries?
That's right. And I think the other that we hear is that they don't have the, they don't have the staff that want to supervise the internship.
Okay.
Yes, um, Sandy, couldn't we, I know last year we had a Niwot student, um, that was a part of the internship. Is there a way we can accept so many students, high school students for the summer program and so many front-range students for the program to make sure that we?
You're smiling when it's happening. I'm smiling because it's your program. Yeah, I mean, I think we, we started it as a, as a college kind of, you know, program to be able to work with the chamber of commerce, but certainly you could expand that opportunity to, to high school students. And we did have one that was a high school student taking classes at front range and was part of the Chamber Student Network. So, I feel like if we're, if we're able to kind of work with the chamber, um, the design is completely up to you.
So, that's something, um, we can work on and see what that looks like, you know, moving forward, especially knowing that you are getting those students ready to be in that type of environment. Um, it's a really good program. So, it's a, this is our second year and so we have other municipalities who are looking at this program as well. So, I would love to, um, for us to connect together and have our high school students to participate as well as our front-range students. So, I know depending on the capacity of the staff and everything of how many, uh, students that we'll be able to take on. So, and then also I just have the question about what about L E V P? What about talking to them about making sure the businesses that they talk to about apprenticeships, uh, programs as well?
Well, the, the mayor and I both sit here on the board and we have had those conversations. We actually are funding, what's that biopharmaceutical group that's coming out that we contributed some dollars to that they're going to bring employment in? Um, but we have been working with here at Boston.
With a Nelson?
What's that?
It's a biopharma, State BioPharma Association or something.
Yeah, we have a number of jobs that include some apprenticeships and internships. But that particular group, they've had very, very success.
Yeah. I think part of it is, you know, A, when you talk about legislation, is addressing some of the insurance issues because the nature of the work, the insurance companies actually can slide in and they can be the impediment.
They are.
And, uh, so that's a piece that our legislative fixed. I think in terms of like the cybersecurity piece, um, I think if we know there's needs and there's gaps, let us know because we have folks, not only in our A T S department, but in our NEXLITE department that work with cybersecurity. So, you know, we could potentially step in.
That's outstanding. I'm going to have Brandon Schaefer reach out to you.
Okay.
He's trying to find internships for students in our PTEC program. And he would, he would love to have some of those slots.
And I think, and I think generally when we look organizationally, whether it's H R or some of these other issues, um, we're pretty unique and I think there's probably very little that we do in our organization. I mean, whether it's finance, business, H R, librarians, recreation specialists, labs, we have a pretty wide breadth in terms of what we do. So, I think if we just kind of can see the needs and then we can work with some of our, our operating groups, um, we could potentially fill some of those gaps from an operational perspective.
That's outstanding. Thank you so much.
Right.
And I do have one last question. Um, Dawn, when you came to council and presented to us, I, if memory serves me right, we had a question about swimming pools, swimming facilities. And you had just explained as to, to me as to why they could not be open to the public. So, could you, uh, address that?
Yeah, we would as a school district relinquish our governmental immunity for liability if we opened that up outside of our own personnel and students, et cetera. If we were in the future to partner with the city on a swimming pool, then there's a way around that loss of governmental immunity. And so, that's one option. The other option that we have that we're exploring, I've been meeting with Harold, is to take the existing pools in Longmont and see if there are any lanes that are available that we as a school district would pay to open up those lanes for students who are working with one of the local clubs, Redfin?
Tails, Redtail.
Redtails. And, and, uh, we've had some really positive meetings and Harold was giving me an update there, that that would enable a number of students to have access to, um, swimming pools and things along those lines. We're also at some point, and I know this would be outside of Longmont, but we're also looking at some point to build another swimming pool on the east side of the district. And, um, so that wouldn't necessarily help with this particular issue that we're talking about, but it would help for people in general, students. Because as we continue to grow, more and more of our students will be able to use our pools, which could take some of the pressure off of the pools that are being used in Longmont, which could then open up more space for the public, those types of things. So, there's a lot of opportunity there. It's, it's at this point looking pretty, pretty optimistic and pretty positive, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, our next, uh, item is the community safety and mental health. Um, is there someone in particular that you would like to address this on there?
Yeah, you know, I can start and then I'll, you know, ask Johnny and others that, more of it, work very closely with this. But, but I will start with some of the things, you know, just from a, uh, infrastructure standpoint, we have an amazing relationship with the Longmont Police Department and all of our police departments across the system, whether it's Red Creek or Firestone or Daytona or Longmont, you know, Boulder County Sheriffs, ME, et cetera. And they work in a very positive way with our students. And they also have that connection because our students have a lot of connections to the community. So, as our SROs hear things in the schools, it gives them information that's helpful in the communities as well. We also have very talented counselors, preschool all the way through grade fourteen. And in the last couple of years, we've added an additional nineteen counselors. Actually, it's a little bit more because we've received some additional grants, but we have bolstered our counseling department significantly. We also have interventionists, which is a unique position to St. Brain. And they work in the capacity of similar to a counselor, just a little bit different, but they're also there. We have school psychologists, we have social workers, and we have our teachers that work very closely with our students in support, along with our nursing staff. And our nursing staff is very, very talented. So, a lot of infrastructure around personnel. We also have K through twelve, our required social and emotional learning in each of our schools with, I think it's invigils and habits of mind and then sources of strength. And so, all of our teachers can get trained in those areas and our students get exposed to that information. We also have partnered a little bit with, uh, with Longmont with some of the gang activity, with, uh, GRIP. And we used to have a very tight connection there and it's been, uh, we've just begun to try to reestablish and decide which schools and what that program will look like. Because we have to be very careful before we come into a school and start talking to elementary school kids about gangs. Because we want to make sure that, one, they don't get scared and, two, their parents don't find out, what's my kid talking to somebody? Who are they talking about? So, it's not as simple as just, yeah, come on in and open the doors. We used to work with, uh, Louie.
Louie.
Yeah, very closely and he did some excellent work. So, there's, there are opportunities there to partner as well. I will tell you this about, um, safety. We used to have a participation rate after school of about fifty-five percent of our students. We're up near eighty percent. And that's in athletics and the music program and the after-school programs. And that's K through twelve. And so, as kids are involved in our after-school program, in where we provide food and we provide transportation and we provide academics and we provide robotics and we provide all of those things at no cost to the students, they're now having opportunities to engage in these activities where they're not necessarily just out the door at two-thirty or three o'clock. And that, when you, when you talk about, you know, crossing over into the mental health arena, one of the things that I know, at least when we're talking about school-aged children, is, one, we have to distinguish between what is a hard day and what is a mental health issue. And those two things can be very different. And what I always caution our staff and our students and everybody about is, let's not make every challenge a mental health issue. Because when we do that, then we're not able to direct our resources effectively to kids who actually struggle with a real mental health issue. And one of the things that I have noticed over time is that mental health is a go-to term for anybody who's struggling. And I think we have to be careful of that. When it really hits its crescendo is when somebody says to me, "We need a snow day for mental health." It's like you just got done with a two-week vacation and you've been in school for two days since the winter break. And now you're telling me you need a mental health day because it's snowing. That's a very dangerous precedent when we start attaching that term to every single time somebody wants some time off. So, that's one thing. So, we're very focused because what we know in St. Brain is that a mental health issue is a very, very serious issue that requires lots of resources and lots of support. We don't want to diminish that by calling everything a mental health issue. But you've heard about the ways in which we're addressing it and we're seeing results. Our discipline rates are way down and our graduation rates are way up and our dropout rate is at zero point six. Our graduation rate on time is at ninety-three point three percent. And we look at the preliminary numbers for next year and it looks like it might go over ninety-four percent. And so, those are all signs of kids, while they're still being challenged, they're doing some really good things. On the flip side of that coin, we have some students and some adults that are struggling mightily with mental health issues. And there are probably a lot of reasons for that. Some can be, it's just something that you've inherited. Some can be challenges that are going on at home. Some can be challenges that are going on in school. I know that when we went through the pandemic, I was very vocal with our county health departments, telling them that you cannot, you can't isolate students for two and a half years when the data does not suggest that it's necessary and not expect a massive backlash when you isolate children from all of their support systems. And if there's one thing we learned through the pandemic, is that the best place for them to be is in school. And we struggled mightily in this district when we saw policy that bars could stay open till ten o'clock at night, church services could continue, people could go to the rec centers, people could gather outside on the streets to express their discontent with whatever was going on politically. And our children were not allowed to go to school. And our constant message fell on deaf ears. And so, when we talk about mental health, we all have to own that responsibility, starting with parents, starting with our city officials, starting with our school district. And it is a full-time job because we have some kids that are struggling mightily. And unfortunately, some of those struggles were inflicted on them by policies that were ill-conceived.
Thank you. Before we have, open that up for questions, uh, Harold, do you want to tell what the city is doing as far as mental health? Because, um, I feel that we've made great strides and, um...
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot, actually. I think the nature of the populations that we deal with are distinctly different, uh, from each other in terms of the challenges that we face, um, on an ongoing basis. I think when we look generally, and this is community-wide, we would say probably the most significant issues, Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, that we deal with in terms of call volume and challenges, um, are mental health substance abuse issues. And so, when we, we look at what we're doing, um, one of the things that we did is we're creating, uh, we're working out of a center of excellence model organizationally. So, we're creating, uh, a mental health center of excellence because we have multiple divisions that are working on mental health issues. And it'll touch housing when we get to the housing conversation. Uh, so, you know, we start with our, our youth center that is, is working on, on the mental health side. It also ties into the intervention programs that we're running through, our Rewind Program, which is really trying to, uh, kids that would normally go into the justice system, we're taking them out and then running through the Rewind Program to avoid that, um, you know, long-term impacts of, the youth center is part of this. Uh, from the public safety standpoint, um, we have our lead core teams that are working on that in terms of immediate response and when we get the calls for service. And Zach can go into more detail on it. And then, uh, our senior services department is really engaged in, in, in mental health services to our community. If we've seen anything, I think I can clearly state that the issues that we're seeing in our older adults is just as significant as what we're seeing in our, in our other populations that we're serving on a regular basis. And then connected to housing, um, in, in all of these areas, we've expanded staffing over the last few years. This year, we, uh, it's connected to housing, but it's going to support the broader initiative as we're bringing on three additional clinicians. Two, uh, will work more globally with, um, housing, but also with all of the groups we talked about. And then one, uh, we're putting specifically to the Suites property, which is a housing authority. So, if you all don't know, the city of Longmont took, um, operational control of the Longmont Housing Authority. Um, and so, I'm sitting in that role as the executive director. And so, we begin, we've begun melding our operations together. Um, the Suites is, um, eighty-five units of permanent supportive housing. And so, when you talk about that, permanent supportive housing is really where you're moving people from homelessness into the first stage of being housed. And, uh, we clearly know and, and the data's showing this is that the struggles that the individuals that live, live in that facility are real. And, uh, so we're bringing a clinician that will work specifically at the Suites property. In addition to that, we're partnering with the Recovery Cafe because associated with both of these substance abuse tends to be pretty common. And so, the Recovery Cafe is beginning to work with the residents of the Suites in terms of living through and maintaining, you know, living through the recovery process and maintaining, uh, recovery. And, and it's more than just substance abuse. We see all forms of trauma with the individuals that move into, into this facility. So, uh, when, when we say recovery, it's a broad base of recovery in terms of what people are challenged with. And so, the Center of Excellence is really combining all of these different work groups that work with different populations so that they can work simultaneous, simultaneously with each other in terms of how we support it. One of the things that we're doing, uh, we worked on a project called Enabling Caring Communities. And what it's doing is really bringing in a software system that actually, um, allows us to communicate more effectively with each other in terms of the people that we're dealing within the community. Being cognizant of all of the privacy issues that we have in play because every one of these groups have their own restrictions in terms of what they can and can't share. But at its most basic level, what it would mean is that if somebody walks into my office, which has happened, um, and we think there's something happening, I can type their name into the system. You know, the most basic level, it would say, "Call Christina Pacheco." And, and we... And we can connect into the person that's working with that individual. But what it's really doing is integrating our operations so we can work completely to support the individual because we're finding that there's just a gap in the system. And then as we talk to the county, because they're on the same system and really working on data sharing is how we all start really working and supporting the individual as we look forward. So that's a five-minute example of, we could probably talk about for hours in terms of the nuances of everything we're having to deal with.
Harold. And Zach, I want to highlight that core program.
Yeah, I will.
And our law enforcement is outstanding. But John has done a great job in connecting us all. And we're piloting that because we're really working hard to keep, we don't want kids getting into the criminal justice system.
Yeah, so I can't take credit for the staff that does an amazing job. One of the big things is, as Superintendent said, is tearing down the walls within the city of Longmont. So Christina Pacheco and her staff, we're working across the city as a line to try to find the resources. One of the challenges I set forth was, the goal is to keep the kids in school. Because once they get out of school, then they're my problem on the street. And so how do we address that within the schools? Superintendent, probably mid-year, we started a pilot program for the last three months of the school where we assigned a clinician from our core team and an extra SRO made some changes on staffing. I'm waiting for a final kind of assessment of that. But the preliminary information was, it worked fantastic. It was only for the Longmont schools, but we were able to send that clinician and send that officer to work with students who are having some type of crisis or in a situation. But then we were also able to connect the parents outside of the school. So additional resources within our community. And so we're looking to continue that program hopefully as we go forward. The Rewind program that Harold talked about is really the brainchild of John Garcia. And most of you, I'm sure, are pretty familiar with him. And the idea was, how did we begin to create a program that, in essence, is a pre-file program? Meaning that we can take a felony, we can take a misdemeanor. We started in our schools, I think the year before last. Then our SROs were funneling the kids to the program. Christina is involved in that program, along with the judge, along with LCJP. And the idea is to bring those in, the kids are evaluated. You guys, please correct me if I'm wrong, because they deal with a lot more lives. But it's giving, identifying what the need of the individual is, giving them the resources and needs to make better decisions or educating them or giving them the mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, and giving them the opportunity to learn from their mistakes. And so I know I've simplified it. If I said it wrong, please, please correct me.
Part of Rewind, it actually, we started this before Zach was even here as well. What we did is we went through and did some program evaluations on Longmont Community Justice Partnership and some other things. And what we really started seeing from the data is that the referrals into the LCJP process weren't really matching the data that we were seeing. And we found that there was a gap in this. And part of that gap is, what we were seeing is young women and women in our community had other issues. And the other issues could have been substance abuse issues, could have been broader family issues, could have been mental health issues. And in a lot of those occasions, that wasn't necessarily qualifying them to go into the traditional community justice program because there's a point where you have to accept responsibility for whatever it is that you've done to get through that program. And these individuals weren't ready to accept responsibility because of any number of challenges that were surrounding them. The goal of the Rewind program is to deal with those issues so we can work them through those processes and then take them to where they can accept responsibility and then move into that restorative justice process. Is that getting in a nutshell?
Yeah, yeah, we're really using restorative justice as an intervention. And really, I think the beauty of this program is it brings the clinical expertise that Children, Youth and Families has, along with the expertise that we have in our municipal courts on the court side of things. And as Zach mentioned, how we partner with our frontline officers, school resource officers, to do that. And so that, I think we started building the program in 2018 was when we rolled out that pilot and have some really good outcomes from there, thanks to the rockers.
Mayor Christina has been a longtime support for our students. And you've done amazing work. And so, I don't know if you can hear me, but a big thank you to you. And one of the things that we've talked a lot about is doing everything we can to keep kids from going down that pathway outside of school. And we have had kids go through the Rewind program. We also have, thanks to our online school, when a kid does something that's pretty serious that would might otherwise require expulsion, we've been able to defer that and keep them in school and have them demonstrate that they're ready to come back in without breaking stride towards graduation. And then they don't get caught up in the criminal justice system and they keep on their track. And we've had some great success with that.
Yeah, and I just wanted, the last couple of vacations, one of the things we started out to do is is we actually tracked every interaction with every student at Longmont School, positive and negative. And so we tracked the data from gender, how the report was made, everything. We've met over the last, probably almost three years, we've met with different organizations. Some have been opposed to SROs being in the schools. Of course, Superintendent has been a huge supporter of that. But we're able to show them real-time data, real-time information. And they have walked away from the meeting going, "Hey, how can we share this across, you know, Colorado?" And we're happy to meet with us. We've met with different agencies and different district attorney's offices, different cities to share this information. But it really is a testimony to show that the data that we have really shows, I think last year we made one arrest with all of our contacts, one arrest. Most of the stuff is getting sent other places. But again, if you ever need that as a school board, you need that information. And we're happy to share that data with you. If you're going to get questions like, "Why are SROs in our school? What's going on?" We're happy to share that data real-time with you. Based on, pretty much anything you could think of, we break it down in this app that each SRO fills out for any contact they have with positive interaction or what we call negative interaction.
Yeah, I think I'd say one thing, we talked about community safety. The biggest challenge we have right now is this. Because historically, what you would see is there was a point where you could see things and you could respond to what you see. What we're finding now is that so much of what's occurring actually is being on different social media platforms. And then the next thing you know, what you do, when we do see it, it's at a different level. Because it's just been bubbling in the social media world. And I know we spent some time talking to folks about, how do we get into that? And as a parent of former teenagers, you know, the only way you can do it is you have to be on top of their act, see it, be engaged in it and deal with it. But I think that's probably our biggest, this is probably our biggest challenge right now is that the world's shifted dramatically in terms of where things start and where they go before you see the explosion.
Yeah, I think to your point, typically, when I was in high school in Old Drake, you'd hear about a fight that was going to happen in front of the trophy case or in the cafeteria and everybody would show up. And so you knew that was going to happen. And now what we can see is it boils up on social media and then we find our youth are now out in our community doing things and shooting each other. It's not just a simple, "Let's fight at the very corner." After football game, you call it a night, it's really bubbled into more, to Harold's point. And that's really what we're trying to combat outside of the schools is what's happening and taking place in social media.
So I think to that point, what are we doing? So obviously, from a broader community perspective program, we started a program with Project NOLA. We're now getting ready to shift it into a different video management system. So we use call volumes to really determine where do we put cameras at certain locations within our community. Preliminary data is telling us one part, for example, the calls for service will reduce by sixty percent. And so we're starting to see that as we place it. You know, we've talked publicly about the use of lock cameras within our community. And we have a couple, we have four or so installed, ten more, five, ten more coming. What that lets us do is, as things start occurring within the community, we're able to see it much faster. And in seeing it much faster, it lets us resolve it in a very short period of time. And I can't get into details on this, but there's been a number of situations that we've had to deal with that historically would have taken months, if not a year, in terms of working through and getting all the information. They, we've actually been able to move through within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And so utilizing technology in the broader community perspective is showing itself in terms of how we deal with these issues. The other thing that it's doing is it's really kind of ticking off, it's creating, we have productivity improvement because we're not getting as many officers involved for as long a period of time, which is resulting in the cost avoidance in the future in terms of potentially hiring to hire even more. And it's reducing our costs immediately because we don't have the ongoing overtime expenses that we have. So really, taking that smart city approach, which is tying in then with next slide, some other things that we're doing in terms of working that more globally. But it really is directly going at community safety.
Can I just share a quick thank you? I am the lead district person that works with the core team because of my job. And it has truly been a blessing this year of the work that they've been able to do in our schools because I, thinking about productivity, I spend most of my day working in true mental health with students with problem-solving. The state of Colorado has closed a huge number of schools that we used to use, which has given us the opportunity, which is what I've always wanted to do, is keep it here, which is in Longmont, right downtown. But if we didn't have the partnership with Core, I don't think we'd be as good at our jobs. And being able to like forward think of like, how do we solve this? Because they can take care of the weekend stuff. And every Monday morning, we meet and we say, "Where did you go this weekend and what did you do?" And we have a great conversation. And then sometimes it's fifteen minutes and sometimes it's a little bit longer. Or if they're needed in a bigger capacity with something else going on or they recognize something in a family, we've been able to truly address it in a great partnership this year. Like nothing else we've been able to do.
Laurie, when you say schools, we're talking about private facilities.
Yes, private facilities.
Outside of, not our school, but...
Not our.
But so many, especially across the state, all our superintendents have been talking about, so many of the private facilities have closed. And that overwhelms schools, both in numbers and in severity of the challenge.
Hey, thank you for that. Ms. Counselor has supported the core program. We've actually got four teams. Unfortunately, through staff, unfortunately, we only have two fully staffed out. We are moving forward with some hiring, but it is. But we are also seeing some challenges that the youth, juveniles, where there is no mental health facilities or treatment for them.
Correct.
Where they're staying in hospitals for butts at a time. And that is creating a problem for us. And so that is something that we're trying to work with our mental health partners to try to figure out, what do we do with individuals that can't be placed, but yet we have nowhere for them to go. And so they're spending literally butts within hospitals until there is an open bed or location for them to go.
And we would welcome the opportunity to keep being a part of that conversation because their education while they are here is still our responsibility.
Okay.
And so we're happy to dive into it. This is our work. And so we are, most of the students that have been in that situation actually fall under me.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
Yep. We have, but we do appreciate Core. So thank you for the work that you have done.
Johnny is one of our assistant superintendents and he oversees all of student services. And I don't doubt you spent a lot of your time getting support of our children, so.
Yeah, I don't think I can add much other than this concept of connecting our kids to their people and their purpose. And that's huge. And not to devalue or undervalue the significance of SROs, nurses. Don mentioned counselors and interventionists. We have well over a hundred and fifty counselors, interventionists, licensed clinical social workers, social workers that work in our system. And so it's important to understand that they are significant and important, but equally important and significant is the after-school programming at Rewind and being involved in next-gen curriculum activities, them being able to have a place to go to after hours when school is not in session, on the weekend when school is not in session. And so that is huge. I don't think there's a big mystery of why we see graduation rates continue to continue to go up as we see programming and opportunities that we provide to our students outside of the school day. And just having that balanced approach, that understanding that when we talk about mental health and we talk about safety, those are equally as important. For students to be able to go to a facility that they're proud of in their community, right? Like we've been working, starting to work with the city of Longmont and their youth center and then being able to go to a facility and they're like, "Wow, I can hang out here." That's significant, that's important. When they come to school, they're proud about how the school looks like and what it feels like. And so all of those things are significant and important and lead to students having, you know, positive outcomes as it relates to mental health and safety. I traditionally come from an area where safety has been, has always been a major concern, South Central Los Angeles. But the Taj Mahal of those communities is the Boys and Girls Club, right? The Urban League and the facilities aren't through the roof. And so, so, you know, not to discount that, by any stretch of the imagination, we're working towards that. And also I would mention that the partnerships that we have with Core and then also B-Tag, there's an organization that we're a part of that's the Border Threat Assessment Group, where law enforcement is partnering with the Federal Bureau of Investigation and also school districts to be assessed not just safety as it relates to students and kids, but also community members. And so we're talking with each other consistently. We have that meeting every couple of weeks. And then we also have a meeting with the youth center. And the old program with Rewind, all of those players are, you meet on a monthly basis and we sit down and have conversations about what are you seeing, what level of support are we providing students? So at least in the last six years when I've been here, we're seeing us having more and more conversations, communications around safety and mental health from a comprehensive standpoint, not just referring a student to an outside counselor. So it's much more than just, if that was the case, we'd have, you know, counselors and, you know, mental health folks and psychologists and psychiatrists all around, but we know it's much more complicated.
I'm glad to hear those conversations happen.
So as you can see, this is ongoing. We could talk about it for hours and hours, but it's really, the partnership is incredibly important. And I want to thank both city and I want to open it up now to questions. When you have a question, if you could direct it to either the superintendent or city manager, that I think would make it easier for response. So, Counselor Yerba.
Well, my question wasn't for either one of them.
Oh, well, then, I'll call it for y'all.
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure, all of this information that's being shared is really, really good information and it makes me happy. But I also want to make sure that youth services back there, Hilda and Christina, is there anything that you want to say about the partnership? Or are there any disparities or anything you want to lift up? Or I just want to make sure that I hear from you.
You know, I think that definitely the partnership is amazing. I'm glad to hear Superintendent Hadad talk about GRIP. I know that that has been something that Hilda and her team at the youth center have been working on as far as, you know, just making sure that the curriculum that we have addresses the needs that we are seeing. So I'm really encouraged that, you know, we're looking at that and looking at how to continue that partnership. Ben Ready is our community coordinator that oversees that area after we retired. And so, you know, many of you know Ben well. And so we're really happy to have him back at the city doing his work. Anything that you...
Yeah, just in addition to that group piece, there's been some work to really look at that program and partner with the teachers. And so that program has now been shortened to four, four days instead of what it was. There really is this focus on the level of development. And so when we're going into, and what we've done is we hit those transition periods. So we're working with our sixth graders that are heading into junior high and looking at, talking about bullying, talking about, you know, their development, how it is that you create empathy, how it is that you create very much like sources of strength that you do and really just kind of reiterating that at that level. And then once we get into high school, that's when we start having those conversations about gangs because this is where the kids are now starting to see it. And in that transition between middle school and high school. So I want to just make sure that you understand... So I want to just make sure that you understand that, you know, when we do go in and we talk about GRIP, that all of that is very developmentally appropriate.
And really what it looks like at that elementary level is what does it look like to make healthy decisions? And, you know, when there's peer pressure, how do you choose good friends? And oftentimes, you know, what Lou would hear when he would go in and into these classes is that kids actually knew much more than, than we even thought that they knew. And so how we tread that lightly and how we really reframe that to it's about making healthy decisions and choosing your peer group well and really starting that support.
You know, excuse me, one, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, you know, one other thing that we have found back to that peer group conversation is when the students during the pandemic
Yes, we lost.
were separated from their support systems, not fully, but considerably in our school. But we found as kids from other communities outside of St. Brain, as far, you know, south as Colorado Springs and as far north as Fort Collins and Great Lakes, were all connecting to your social media point.
Yeah.
And those relationships, we would see kids coming into our system that didn't live in our community and doing things out in the community. And the other challenge we've seen is in some instances, more often than we would like, the parents are in support of the behavior and are actually involved in the behavior with their child. And that becomes a very, and I've sat in on meetings and I've been privy to conversations that have been very difficult because we're fighting an uphill battle when their parents are in support of the behaviors that they're doing. And don't get me wrong, I'm not talking about parents across the board, most parents are outstanding. But we have enough that it's problematic. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing and the sensitivity around the work because it's a tough, tough job.
And so we're working, not only are we working with the youth, but we're working with their families as well. And we're engaging the parents and we're having those meetings and we're having those conversations. We have a robust partnership with Zach and his team and the SROs. And so we're getting referrals from the youth and reaching out to the parents and having those conversations and having those sit downs. And so it's because you're right, kids don't operate in silo, they are in the system. And so, you know, as much as you're part of that system, we're part of the system, and so are their parents. And so if we don't engage the whole system, then it's going to be almost virtually impossible to eliminate what it is that we're seeing.
I think just to add one more thing, you know, one of the things that you mentioned, Superintendent, is that you have about 80% of your kids that are engaging after school. And I think that there's some opportunities for us to look at the 20% that are engaging and how we might be able to provide those, those support systems, whether it's, you know, through the youth center, through parenting classes. I think that there's some opportunity to Councilmember Yarbro's point about how we might work on engaging the other 20, 20%. You know, we were just having a conversation with Councilmember Adolfo Ferring and our library director about how do we get kids signed up early with the library and provide those resources and really looking at that holistic approach to supporting.
And along those lines, I want to just give a very public thank you for the support for the Life Skills Fair event that we did in March. That was just a great first step in engaging youth from all across the city to learn some of those basic skills that they're going to be needing and, you know, just as they, as they age and as they get older. And very much looking forward to continuing to do this work together. And as I'm, I'm listening to you all, you know, talk about the apprenticeships and the internships, I think there might be some areas to explore there as far as partnering and bringing in youth and really raising awareness around opportunities that are opening available to them. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So open it up for questions. This was a huge topic and we have three more agenda items to go through. So Counselor Yarba, for it.
And is there anyone else that wanted to speak to the topic before I do because I respoke? Okay, so I was one of the people who asked to add this to the agenda. And a couple of things, so one, you know, as I heard the Core, we have a Core steering committee. And I don't know, and I'm part of that committee, I'm the person with lived experience. Just kidding. And I don't think we have a St. Brain representative on there. We do meet quarterly and this would be a great opportunity to have, you know, we cover a lot of topic and looking at how to strengthen the program and keep it sustainable as well as what, and addressing the core needs. So we have folks from the hospital, from, from the county. Yeah, so, you know, if there's an opportunity to move you into that. And I remember speaking with Mike Butler in the early days of, I think it was like 2014, 2015, 2016, when we were, you know, going through stuff with my own daughter with suicide. And, you know, really talking about and having, and sees conceptualizing this and talking about what it's like to be a parent and trying to navigate the mental health system. And it just doesn't seem to be getting any better. And so I am part of the Mental Health Colorado and we do meet monthly. And, you know, just looking at the gaps and what legislation should we be advocating for and moving forward. And, you know, had opportunity to write letters and testify to get key mental health legislation passed. But that's just one piece, one component of it. And so for me, my focus is really addressing that 20% or even that 0.6. You know, you know, I look at that 0.6 and I was like, well, you know, is that my son and his friends? You know, and as we're trying to navigate and really take care of the kids who are falling through the cracks, who, you know, maybe cannot sustain concurrent enrollment in front range in order to do career tech and have those opportunities, but really addressing the kids who are disengaged and how to reengage them. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, working with our children's youth and families and they've helped, you know, get out in, with certain communities like Countryside Village and having a family meeting. I mean, I've had parents reach out to me who are just, they don't know what to do. They're young parents, they just don't have the skill set. And so it's not necessarily that the parents are approved of that, but they just don't know how to navigate and how to, how to get their kids going in the right track. And, you know, I've done a lot of home visits with a lot of folks, especially at Countryside Village. So, you know, looking at how we can address those kids that are not engaged in sports and who go home and there's no adult around. One of the things, you know, that I've had conversations with Hilda about is, you know, possibly having a satellite youth center out there and looking at what kind of transportation. And so really focusing on helping the kids get to these spaces. So even if it's not necessarily a satellite, we don't have the capacity to do a satellite youth center in different parts of the town, but how could we provide transportation to get the kids to the youth center? And so they're having positive experiences that are outside of the school system. I know some of the issues that my daughter had was she was in the school and she's hanging around the same friends, she has the same garbage. But then when she's in an outside, when she was engaged with arts clubs or ballet outside of school, she was able to kind of reimage herself and build, strengthen relationships outside of that norm. And so she, that was something that helped empower her. So what can, what kinds of things could we do in collaboration to help empower some of our kids who are just not making it in the regular classroom setting? And have opportunities to meet new kids and have positive adult mentorship. So that's kind of what we were talking to. So if there's ways that we can work together on that, I would love to have that opportunity.
Susie, we didn't get what organization you're in that you wanted a St. Brain member on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I said it the same.
You did, I didn't.
The Core Steering, Core Team Steering Committee.
Core, okay.
So it's Emily Van Dorn.
Okay.
Who leads it.
So you would like a St. Brain.
Well, if somebody from St. Brain is interested, I think, you know, having your voice on there would be very powerful.
All right.
And very insightful since a lot of the calls for service are.
One of the things I'll share with you is, you know, I appreciate the focus being on the 0.6. But I want you to know is that was seven and eight percent not too long ago.
Yeah.
And so our focus is the same, which is what we don't want. And we also know that the graduation rate used to be at 55% for our most at-risk students. It's almost at 90%. So I don't want there to be any confusion about where our focus is.
Yeah.
We're very interested in where your focus is. Because I think that 0.6 that you're talking about, if you can help us identify where they are, because the reality is they don't come to school.
No.
And we don't have any contact with them. But you might through, you know, through whatever mailings go out or addresses you have, like when you talk to those parents that you say you talk to, if you could bring them to us, then we can help them. But I want you to hear clearly that even from last year, last year our graduation rate's going up by another percent. And when we talk about the 80% that are involved, it used to be 60%, 58%. So I don't want you to not focus on the 0.6. I also don't want you to discount the 20% that we have put back on track. And I think that that's important and I don't think that's your intention. But I think we have to communicate that we understand just how much has gone into doing what we've done and not simply say, well, now you're at 80%, but I'm only concerned about the 20% because that 20% used to be 40 and 50. And that's where we can really use your help is to let us know how you can help us fund these programs and let us know how you can help us with transportation and let us know how you can help us with facilities. Harold's been great and we're trying to work on that aspect of it. But the other thing is, is, you know, I think that there are a lot of kids who don't experience garbage in our schools. They experience wonderful things and they succeed at a very high level. And so I don't want to paint the picture that our kids are engaging in garbage in our schools.
No, and that's not my intent. My intent is really filling the gaps, looking at what are some of the barriers and helping in that regard. And I think my focus is the 20%, you know, the ones that are disengaged. And, you know, and really looking at what can we do to enhance and make better.
And some of them aren't, some of them aren't disengaged, some of them are working. Some of them are at home taking care of their children. So I don't want you to feel like all 20% that aren't in co-curricular are disengaged. But there's clearly work to be done and we have shared with you all of the things we're trying to do. And so I think this would be a great time for you to share some of the things that you're doing so that we can help you. So what are the programs and initiatives that you're engaging in that we can come to the table?
So I think that that would be a good conversation to have offline because we are getting close.
But yeah, I think, you know, children's youth and families.
Exactly. And even bring it to council on how we can work. I hear a precession in that conversation.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, and Karen.
I just have a comment on the topic as well. Our general counsel, Tim, brought up a story about what his mom told him about expectations. And we set the bar very, very high for our students and they're achieving. They're meeting our expectations in most ways. And I think in a blanket statement, we can say that addressing some of these issues that we're talking about is done through raising our graduation requirements, raising our expectations, expecting our students to participate and be part of the community, the St. Brain community, whether it's Longmont, me, Firestone, Frederick, Yuri. Each are unique, but it's this district that unites a very, very tight community. And when we see our numbers that Dawn stated earlier about graduation and dropout and I would, I would not be surprised if we had a really significant statistic in a low, in lower than that, you know, 20%. We know in our country, there's always going to be a certain percentage of mental health statistically. But, you know, when we have things going on in partnerships that we all talked about tonight for our students and for our community, we're headed in the right direction. So while again, focus so important on those, in a greater way, we can just keep raising the bar and we can just keep these expectations high of ourselves as leaders in this community and for our students.
Are there any other fast comments or questions for about mental health? No, let's move on to housing, the housing update because you know that, we have a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of. So I think generally when we talk about all of the issues, the thing that probably is the undercurrent in this conversation is housing costs. So when we look at housing, in March of last year, when we talked about Longmont, the average sales price was $663,000. That's just over $90,000 more. These are houses that sold in March over March, just to give you some perspective. That's about $90,000 more than Carman Valley. And a bolder number, the average sales price is 1.5 billion. And so when we look at housing prices in terms of how they've escalated and you talk about affordable housing, capital A, which means that it's federally subsidized. And you talk about attainable housing, which is workforce housing, so that's about 80 to 120% AMI. 120% AMI, $663,000 in Longmont. That's the average. And the important part is understanding what's happening on both sides of that because we're also seeing that houses that are selling below the average tend to be purchased, let's say at $400,000, but people are purchasing those homes and then putting $200,000 of investment into it. And so what you're seeing is houses cycling out of that. So when we talk about affordable housing, capital A, and this is more associated with the Housing Authority, we're looking at 50% AMI below. Historically, the Housing Authority built primarily age restricted units. And so that is typically 55 and older. We only have one family unit that was built. And so we have about 475 units that we manage in terms of actual units. We also have around today, probably 410 vouchers that we manage. And so those are Housing Choice vouchers. That number, while the dollar amount is being increased by HUD, is actually decreasing in the number of vouchers that we can provide because the rental rates are going up. And so we received an additional $1 million from HUD this year for Housing Choice vouchers, but we're actually having to reduce the number of vouchers because of the rental rates in the community. So when you think about housing, that kind of puts it in perspective. Housing has been the council's a big priority for this council and the council before. And we set a goal to build six additional housing units in five years. We have one, which is not age restricted that we partnered on, which is the, we call it the Crisman Development. That's the new units that are being built in North Main. Those are being leased up and that's a different project because they're doing income averaging under the low income housing tax credit model. So that does include some 70 and 80% AMI units. Those have been completely leased up, based on the information that I'm getting. We're in construction on another 55 permanent supportive housing units adjacent to the suites. That again, permanent supportive is really transitioning those that are near homelessness or are homeless into a housing model. And that's an additional 55 units and we'll be at about 130 units of permanent supportive housing. We've got another housing project that we're in the development stages on, which is Ascent, a project on Northover. This is probably the first significant family housing that we're building. So that's going to be one through four bedroom units. But we're also including early childcare as a part of that project. And we'll be partnering with Wild Plum in terms of providing early childcare for the residents that live at that housing model. The Colorado Health Foundation gave us $2 million for that component. So we're, and that's a model that we're looking. So we're, and that's a model that we're looking at. So we have that in development in terms of affordable housing. And we have about four more projects that are in the pipeline on the capital A affordable housing. You have to work through the Lytech model. And so Longmont's been pretty fortunate where, over the last three cycles, we've been awarded projects. And so the state actually has to balance that out. So we think we have a good chance for one more. That'll be the Out-Appwood project, again, not age-restricted. It'll be one and two bedrooms that we have there. The city council has put a million dollars a year into an affordable housing fund that helps support the development of affordable housing. And then in terms of looking at the workforce housing, the attainable housing, which is 80 to 120% AMI, we're in the process of putting another million dollars a year toward that. And then in addition to, to those two funding sources, we have a million that we're putting in, but it's $650,000 of ongoing funds. And then we finished the million-dollar gap with Longmont. In addition to that, we have the inclusionary housing program that I think this year Joni's bringing in around $3 million. And so what we do is, we're, we're using that money to leverage private money and, and different state federal dollars in order to create the housing. So if you think of those three projects, they're probably, or the four projects, they're in the neighborhood, let's say, $60 million. So for a million dollars in this project, a million dollars in this, you know, we're probably leveraging $240 million of investment in terms of housing that we're bringing in our community. On the attainable side, so we've created the attainable housing fund, the council. We have our first project that's moving forward. And so that's going to be 185 four-sell units, of which 55 of those units are going to be permanently deed-restricted affordable units. So when you think about sales prices on that, I think of 300 to 350 per perspective. And I'm using wide ranges because the AMI's changed in terms of what we're looking at. The, the other 135 units will be four-sell attainable housing units. There are other communities that are doing projects like this. I don't think there's one this large in Colorado in terms of everything is attainable or affordable. What we've realized is affordable four-sell housing, the subsidies are significant. So typically, even if you look at the Habitat for Humanity model, it costs them about $400,000 to build a house, and they're selling it for $300,000. We're seeing that in our project as well in terms of what we're having to do for affordable housing. Even attainable, there's, there's some subsidies there. You're going, what's driving the cost? First and foremost, it's land cost. Land cost is really the first thing that starts tipping the housing price over. And I think that's why you see the difference between the cost of housing in Longmont versus Carman Valley. Because land's, land's less expensive east of here. When, when you then look at that, the next piece that comes in is actually construction materials and everything that goes into the home. And so we have built a really good model on this project that council approved the development agreement on. We just went through zoning. And so it was an open book process in understanding what are the cost drivers. In order to do this, we actually had to get really aggressive in terms of the housing costs. And so we're looking at probably, it has to sell within 90 days in, in terms of doing this. So we're, we're really working the issues to manage it. One of the things that we did, and this is part of the agreement, is because the city is putting in, with federal funds that we received and state funds that we received, plus fee waivers, plus cash, that's about 12 to 13 million dollars into this project. So we're taking the total project costs, figuring out what the percentage of city investment is. And so there's a preference then for individuals on, I think it's around 10% of the cost for city employees. There's then a preference for people who work in Longmont or who are retired in Longmont for the other units. Frankly, as we develop this project, we're actually planning to conduct a lottery to look at how we sell those homes because we think the demand's going to be so great that we think the lottery approach is probably going to be the best way to move forward. And so we think we've defined the model. Building attainable housing is much easier. So if we were to come in and do an attainable housing project, we think if we could get reduced land costs on that and fee waivers, the margins are pretty narrow on attainable housing, 80 to 120. The more affordable housing you put into that, the more the margins start separating in terms of what you need to do to incentivize it. The attainable housing units, we figured out a deed restriction. We call it a rolling deed restriction. So if somebody lives in the house 10 years, they can sell the house and then they have market value coming out of it. If you sell the house within 10 years, then whomever buys it gets another 10-year deed restriction. The data's really telling us it's common. So for individuals, most people live in a house about six and a half years, and then they sell it. So what we're doing is cycling this even in terms of preserving that housing stock. If somebody has to get out of the house a year, eight, nine, or seven, eight, or nine, they can sell the house. If they can't find somebody to buy it within that AMI range, they can sell it for market value, but then they have to pay as a percentage of the equity back in terms of getting that house at a rolling price. So this is a program that we think we've, we've got a sense of the model and what that's really going to look like. And we had a really good, it's a really good public-private partnership. The landowner, to give you a perspective, sold us the land for the affordable housing piece at $3.65 a square foot. That was part of the Costco deal. And then they sold us the property for the attainable at, I think, $10 a square foot. Market value for land, without water conditions being met, it's about $18 to $19 a square foot. Now, it's about a year ago, so I'd assume it's about $20 to $21 a square foot. When you factor water into that, the value can be anywhere from $23 to $30 a square foot. So you see the difference that land really makes in terms of being able to build, build these housing units. We could purchase a property in that project. So we're talking to other folks about how we replicate this and, and continue moving it forward. So, you know, when you look at the numbers, we have about 500 or 600 housing units that, from affordable to attainable, that are going to be coming online in the next two to three years. And we're continuing to develop other projects, looking at Prop 123 funds. Legislature is also really focused in terms of the transportation project and rail. They've really shifted funding for housing into transit-oriented development. So we're starting to really look at our downtown core and what that looks like and what's available from a funding perspective. Nice quick update on housing?
That's a lot. But we're moving on fast. And the part that has always really excited me is the part that Harold just described with the land that we purchased from Costco and that the land was there, which as he said, is the biggest part. So anytime there is an organization that, that has land and wants to, to have their teachers or nurses or be able to live and work in the city, I think that we can figure out a way to partner with them to build that housing. But this is kind of a pilot project for us. So to see how that works and if it, if it does work the way I hope it does in keeping our employees within the city, then it, it's a win-win for us, so.
And I think our perspective, when we talk about community safety and we talk about, we talk about all these issues, the most important piece to that is actually housing. Because housing stability is important in terms of keeping people moving through the various programs that we're doing. Because we know when you take away that housing stability, it sends a shockwave through the family and everyone involved. And so that's really kind of from the housing program that we're also focusing on. Because, you know, you can look at 10 years' worth of data and find out that housing stability is kind of the foundation to everything in terms of success.
So, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, I think it's great. It'd be wonderful to eliminate that challenge for people. It's very, very important. We're doing our part as far as salaries go. We're trying to, I think we have the highest base pay now in the state.
Thank you.
We're going to continue to make strides there, but it's, it's a challenge. When you look at $663,000, that's a lot. You know, I remember the day when it was $350,000 at Longmont for the average home. Thank you for the work you're doing.
I have a quick question. You didn't mention where the state's at on the Miha program?
So the state's developed a middle-income housing program. We actually have one project that we're talking about that may come into Longmont. And again, that is on the rental side. Market rate for rent is 80% AMI. So the state programs in the square pack round hole for Longmont because it's really built for Denver and the mountain communities. So it's a program that helps fund that attainable housing, that workforce housing, and it's income restricted workforce housing. And they're still in the process of developing that program. I think one of the challenges is it's a new governmental organization. And so issuing is, is sort of something they're continuing to work for. Because the one thing about housing is the interest rate is really a key variable in terms of the construction cost and how you look at it. So it's continuing to develop. We're actually in conversations right now in terms of, is there a way to replicate that, but it's not a state program? Because I think having that local control is really important because the state ends up owning those properties and what they, how they divest of those properties is, is unclear right now. So that's part of what we're looking at in terms of the transit-oriented development in the downtown area. Some options that I'm, I will be talking to council about in, in the next month or so.
And Harold, do you want to address the governor's bill that he is signing that includes ADUs as part of the?
Yeah, so from a city perspective, you know, one of the things that housing advocates talk about is the ability to, to have an accessory dwelling unit on your property. And if you look at a lot of the land use legislation that was brought forward over the last two sessions, it really is about trying to create more housing opportunities within communities. For Longmont, it's been a really interesting conversation because Joni and her planning group and the council approving it have done a really good job of establishing our codes that actually met everything that the state was saying. The reality is, is not every city's doing that. And, and so that's really the driver in terms of some of their land use legislation that they were pulling forward. So in Longmont, you can build an ADU under a code. The stopping point on the ADU was that the homeowners associations could prohibit the ADU from being created, even though the city code allowed that. The legislation that passed actually will allow ADUs. I'm looking at Joni to make sure, but homeowners associations don't have the ability to prohibit an ADU, I think, under that legislation.
I think that made it through.
Yeah. I think that piece made it through. So that's another potential solution to housing, is really accessory dwelling units. And that could be separate and apart, or it could be in someone's basement. You know, the question really is, what's going to be the traction on that? Because again, when you're looking at interest rates and other components, there's other challenges. But what we've done from a housing standpoint is we have designed stock ADU plans that people can utilize if they want to do that through a housing and community investment decision. But we do think the next few years in terms of land use is going to continue to be a challenge for us at, at the state level because it really is kind of, some of these things kind of are starting to dig into homeowners authority, which is changing that for all communities. And, you know, parking restrictions was another thing that they adjusted in terms of, cities can't set maximums.
Can't set.
Cities can't set minimums for parking in transit-oriented development areas. And so there's a lot of changes that we're going to have to start really digesting in terms of what that means. Really is about, you know, housing is the driver in all of these conversations.
It looks like we've covered that one pretty well. So the next one is library cards for high school students.
May I, if I may?
Yes.
Just because we've, some of us in the room have been together since 7:00 a.m. And it's a long day. I just wanted to invite, you know, employees or others that if you do need to leave, you know, we would respect that. Or, and, or if you wanted to continue conversations with any of these topics that you think might take more time than we should, we might want to allow tonight, then I would entertain that as well.
Thank you for that. I think that's a great suggestion. And it looks like the very last thing on our agenda. We've already rolled over under mental health and community. The after-school programs and support for at-risk youth. Sounds to me, do you agree that we've probably covered that one pretty well?
There's a couple, there's a couple things that I think could be noteworthy on that.
Okay. Let's go with Karen Rapplin's suggestion that anyone who feels that they would have heard enough, know the subject better pretty well, and have no questions, please feel free to, to leave.
No judgment.
No, at all. Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things that we found some really good success with is after-school, our AAA program. And that is providing students with extra time after school, focusing on reading, writing, and other things. And we're providing the transportation, and we're providing meals. And so that takes them well beyond the, the school day. And we've seen a lot of growth in reading and math scores and other things. And that's a program that's very unique to St. Brain. The other thing is, is through the entire month of June, we have extended the school year again through our project launch program, four days a week with small class sizes. And again, we're providing transportation and we're providing meals. And that, you know, these programs cost millions of dollars. So it's not like you just decide you're going to have school all through the month of June, and you're going to have school in after-school programming. And then we start two weeks early in August with our Jump Start program, again, giving kids that jump start that they need. And I think taking a lot of that time where kids are isolated and having them in school with all of these opportunities has really, really helped. And I think there's a piece in there also about English as a second language. And I don't know if I am, if you want to share a little bit about, because the results that you've experienced and our system has experienced with our children is pretty phenomenal.
Yes, and, and, you know, just thank you so much. And it's been amazing to be able to, to work here in Longmont. It's so, such a vibrant city. And, you know, I just wanted to share a little bit about our population. You've seen in the news, a lot of the newcomers and people coming to Colorado. We've maintained pretty much the same rate of 11% of our students here in St. Brain are English language learners. So historically, we really haven't seen growth, but we definitely are seeing a shift in our students who are arriving. Many are older, more unaccompanied youths, where typically it would be families with students. So we're definitely seeing that. It connects with some of the conversations we've had with supporting a youth as they're, in their teenage years. But I want to say one of the things that's, it's really profound, and it goes back to what Dawn's sharing about our graduation rates. We, we really have the highest English learner graduation rate in the state of Colorado. In fact, you know, if you compare the state in 2023, only 65% of the English language learners in the state of Colorado graduated in four years. And here in St. Brain, 83% of our, of our ELS are graduating. It's truly a significant accomplishment. And I think through the professional development of our teachers, you know, the support of our principals, but also the family engagement. I think we've heard a lot of talking about how important it is to engage with our families. I really want to, you know, give a shout out to Claudia and also to. I really want to, you know, give a shout out to Claudia and also to Jenny Diaz and Brady as well. You know, they have helped us with our Primero, First Generation Youth Leadership Summit that we've had for a few years. And we talk a lot about providing each and every student with a strong competitive advantage. When we look at that data, we really talk about what is significant. Yes, the outstanding teachers and staff. But also, we take a look at the bond money, where we significantly in downtown Longmont really created some outstanding school facilities, which are just incredible. And then also our PTEC programs. And when you talk to our families, and I've been here ten years, and I was a City of Longmont resident myself, it is the families who want to know how their children can succeed. And our Cofecitos programs, all the work through our PIE programs, that's really coming together with the city, the county, many of our nonprofits, supporting our Spanish-speaking mainly population here in Longmont, has truly been outstanding. We just continue to see the family engagement grow and grow and grow. And they're advocating for their students to take advanced placement courses. They want their students to take the concurrent control courses. They want their students to engage in the PTEC, where they can get, you know, just like our fifty-three students who graduated with an associate's degree, two weeks before they graduated, with a St. Brain high school diploma. And so I think that, I really want to thank the collaboration between all of us because family engagement has made a significant impact for our English language learners. And we're going to only continue to see that graduation rate increase.
Thank you. Councilor, good afternoon.
Yeah, so thank you. And, you know, being a Title I teacher or in the school district, I see that. So I have one of my newcomers from Columbia, came in last year and speaks a stint of English. She's reading in third grade live this year. So, you know, I was able to exit five students from reading plants. And they're all Whistler University students. So it was, it's very exciting to see that. And, you know, I attribute a lot of it to the training that's afforded. And I take every opportunity I can to, to extend that learning for me as an educator. And, you know, I really, so I appreciate that. And, you know, so there is a lot of good work happening. And I see when the kids are given that task, I know several of you here were part of, or watching the, when our students a couple of years ago, now graduated fifth grade, did the Sugar Factory redesign, and that was profound to them. And, you know, even talking, listening to them at their graduation for fifth grade, remembering that experience and wanting to look at city planning and, you know, look at different departments and, oh, I want to do this. And, you know, and of course, when are you going to build it? So we're looking to get that remedied as well. And so then, just having those opportunities for kids. And so I think the community engagement, you know, my involvement with PIE, I've seen a lot of our Latinx families become leaders, just really become leaders and take ownership in their child's education. And so by having those continued operations, you know, those continued opportunities to be sustainable and come in place. You know, and I want to look at, I want to make sure too that we're not duplicating. You know, so maybe we have an idea to do something in our end, that you all are doing something in your end, that we have that crossover and that interconnection. So we can address the kids who need it, but as well as really look to enhance those kids who are wanting to move forward and the families that are ready to really take leadership roles in their communities.
Thank you. Do we have a few minutes for the library cards for high school students?
Yeah, yeah. And so that was, let me pull up my phone because I have the MOU. And so it sounded like there is interest in, I know we had a former, and you were the one who signed it, as I looked at the MOU for 2022.
Yes, and John and I were talking, they could be taking some work offline to look at that again.
Yeah.
So we sure can.
Yeah, I know, I think that would be great, you know, looking at expanding that access for students. You know, like it's, I mean, I've gifted every year several books to my students just because they already have books at home. So how can we help provide that access, especially looking to 21st century, there's a lot of digital media?
Yeah, and I'll also point out, you know, we have a really robust here within our district. We have my own reading, which is tremendous. We have the nation's largest, yeah, district digital library, largest. And if you partner with the Longmont Library, it gave you more access to it. So I think John and I can work on that and see what kind of work out.
Thank you, that sounds great. That sounds great. And for a bit of trivia, you probably already know this, but I just learned it, is that Longmont had the very first library in the state of Colorado. So I win the trivia contest?
Yeah, a lot of firsts.
Yeah, so we actually got through the agenda and went, over time, thank everybody, and nobody left. So I'm impressed. Thank everybody, I love this. What I would like to hear next year, though, is what did we try that didn't work? And this all sounds wonderful, but nothing is perfect and nothing works all the time. So if we come together again next year, it'd be really nice to hear what we tried and it didn't work. So we don't try it again. Thank you very much. We are.